Okay, I need a motion to reconvene an open session.
Motion.
Thank you.
Motion.
Second. Do I have a second?
That figure.
So, all in favor of reconvening, reconvening open session, raise your hand. Very good. Okay. We have a presentation this evening from the EPA from Mr. Greg Bach, is that correct?
Yes.
Would you address the board for us, please?
Sure.
Come up and sit at this.
Pull it back some.
This one, he's sitting here too.
My name is Greg Bach. With the Environmental Protection Agency. I'm a project manager and I oversee sampling and remediation of lead contaminated sites in Jefferson County. So, for those of you who may not be aware, EPA has been actively sampling and remediating property since about 2006 in this county. We've worked in counties south of here, St. Francis County, Washington County, Madison County primarily, and then some through the Viburnum Trend, Iron Reynolds Dent, those areas. Again, sampling and remediating those counties, that work started a lot earlier than Jefferson County. But when we first started in 2006, we were primarily looking at mining sites in the southwest portion of the county. Since that time, through additional sampling, the scope of the projects expanded where we're now actually looking at the entire county with the exception of Kirkland Union, that's a separate site. So, basically, any residential property owner that wants their property sampled in Jefferson County, we go out and do that work. The schools in Jefferson County are sampled, looked to me from best I could tell sometime around 2007, 2008 through, I think we've had some as late as 2012, being sampled. So, I'm here today to talk to you about some of the findings of sampling that occurred on a football field just behind this building here. In 2008, the school district had granted access for one of our contractors to come out and sample all of the school grounds. And, you know, I don't have a lot of information about what they found on other schools that may have been remediated at that time, but one area, the football field behind this building here, came back with concentrations that at that time, when it was sampled, were questionable as to whether or not the material was going to be addressed. So, the school district most likely received a letter that was worded something to the effect of no further action at this time and left it at that. That's not exactly the way we would have hoped to have worded it now, you know, hindsight's always 20/20. My group, actually, the one that Iowa four comes in establishes what the lowest safe level of lead is for a community. And in 2012, we completed what was called a record of decision for the site, which establishes that, that low number. And the number is 400 parts per million, that's the magic number. If you have an average concentration of 400 parts per million lead or higher, we recommend to property owners that they have those areas of the yard remediated. And by remediated, what we mean is we come into the yard with a contractor, we excavate a foot of soil, dispose of that contaminated soil, and then bring in clean soil and lay down either, you know, some sort of a sod over the top of the clean soil. That's generally the remediation process. So, in looking through the database, we found that there were three schools in Jefferson County that had concentrations that were below the old number that the previous contractor was working off of and above, our 400. And one of those areas was the football field here at Hillsborough, this practice field behind here. So, what I'm here for today is, you know, to both explain, you know, what the concentration there means and also ask permission to do the remediation. So, we have a formal process that we go through, there's an access agreement, Mr. Coleman's got in his hands there, kind of spells out some of our requirements for a property, or typically it's for a residential property, in this case it would be for a school. But also, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, you know, about that process, any concerns you may have for, you know, students or athletes that may be using that area. And basically, just open it up to the board now, if you'd like, you know, to ask any questions.
Is it the entire field or just a portion?
It is the football field inside the track.
Inside the track.
Right.
And what's the timeline, though, to do this?
Well, we've had some discussions about that. There's several things that, that control our timeline. As far as starting the work, you know, it's, it's as simple as getting an access agreement signed, making sure that we're going to meet whatever requirements that the board or the administration has for both entering into the area, how we're going to leave the area, when we're done, those kinds of things. There's, there's some agreements that have to be put in place ahead of time before we start. But, you know, we could get started potentially within a couple of weeks.
How long does it take to finish?
And finish with the weather that we have right now. I was explaining earlier today that our contractor has worked one week and it wasn't even a full week out of this month. So, they're really far behind right now. In fact, they just called off work for the remainder of the week just because of the rain we just got. This work is very heavily dependent upon the weather. So, whereas I may think they could be able to get this work done in a perfect world in maybe six weeks, we should be prepared for something more like 12. And, you know, that's hopefully not how long it's going to take, but we have to assume that at some point during this process, we're going to get more rain.
But what about six or twelve?
Right, exactly.
We met, Angie, we met as a co-facility meeting today with Rob, Doc, Eddie, and Ray, and Coach Brandon. So, I mean, there's a lot of questions. We met for an hour and a half.
After football season?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of questions, trust me. I guess the first thing we need to know is when to do it. So, I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer deal.
My concern is, if we had kids on that field this summer, you know, you say 400 parts per million is kind of your threshold.
Sure.
Where are we? And it kind of drags that imposed for our students.
555.
Right, 555.
And they've been using it since 2008.
So, to explain that number a little better, just so that you can put it in perspective, 400 is considered a very protective number because what we're considering for that number is that it's a child under the age of seven, living at a home full-time, playing in the yard full-time. The exposure scenario for that field is going to be different. While you may have some kids under seven there, the assumption is that they're not going to be there as regularly as they are in their yard, or maybe a park down the street. But the exposure scenario there is, is a lot less risky than in, say, like a residential yard.
Well, I've been having a youth program, it's there three nights a week, and then Saturdays, but that's four, four days.
Which is exactly the same thing we talked about was that now that we know Mr. Marino and myself, and everyone at the facilities committee, it's the same thing. Now we know, I didn't know, in 2008, we get a letter saying, you know, at this time, no no first, no, because there's several factors, as you said. We do have some seven-year-olds that play out there, but most of them are in the primary, appear a little bit older, they're not down in the dirt as much, but we have field day out there. But our thought was, how can we rearrange the football schedule to where, you know, practice might have to not be down there? What can we do? Because now that we have knowledge, we can't keep putting our new football kids out there because of their fear of concerns and safety. And beyond that, we also talked for an hour, maybe for an hour and a half, what are some of the concerns we have? What is the irrigation in that field? How are we going to mitigate that process and work around it or replace it? We talked about school times. If we come into session, it's going to be tough having dump trucks running up and down over here next to Mr. Reed and Howard's building. My belief is, you know, that's true, but I'd rather it be in the fall of the year than the spring of the year, when I'm working with kids getting on grade education, we be prepared for testing. We also talked about the track, they're going to have to cross that track. How are we going to mitigate that process to make sure the track's not destroyed? But there are some positive things. We talked about the light poles. Light poles have a wood standard there, how close can we get? And those are things that we write down in our commitment to this, these things need to happen. We like the fact that they're willing to, hey, we want the dirt out of there, and so some of the dirt's under some of this concrete, so we'll take that too to get to the dirt, which we have an old, old ball pit down there that, we can get rid of that runway, we don't need it.
And then long and triple jump roadways.
And so, we've been assured that if there's any damage done to the track or to the irrigation system, that they will put back and maintain and take care of it.
What about the sod situation, though?
Exactly.
Because I know there's a certain area that they'll sod and then that, then the rest of it is seeded.
Right. Now, for a typical residential property, and I have to explain this to property owners all the time, typically, you know, if you're in a rentry, if you're in a city lot, we allow up to a quarter acre of sod per property. That generally will get us through most of the work. There have been properties that have exceeded that quarter acre limit, this would be no exception. There, there are ways around that in this contract, but we have to make sure. One of the reasons why we didn't come to you guys at the beginning of this contract is because this property represents a lower risk than some of the properties where we have young kids and thousands of parts per million in the property, we had to do those first. But one of the other reasons is we got to make sure we had enough capacity to do this work in this contract. So, you know, there's limits to, this isn't an open check that we have, this is a very finite amount of funds available for this work county-wide. We've got to make sure it's distributed appropriately, so we have to prioritize based on risk. The reason you're coming in, two years into the contract as opposed to the first, is because this property represented a lower risk than some of our other properties. So, we had to make sure that we had enough money and capacity in contract to address those first before we could approach here. So, because now we have a better idea of where that, that money sits, how it lies, we should be able to arrange for sod over the entire area. That shouldn't be a problem. And, you know, that's, that's going to be one of the conditions of this agreement is, you know, we can't obviously stop the sod halfway through the field. And this sod that's here is a watered grass, a zorja remediar grass. So, you, that's only available inside. You couldn't plug that and, you know, expect it to grow back in any quick amount of time. So, so there, there are some special occasions because this is a school and, you know, the, the type of area that it is, that we can get around that quarter acre limit that's put on most people. So, you know, it's, it's a balancing act, it's, you know, trying to balance the funds with the work.
And the funds are anywhere, we're guessing 300,000, a half a million dollars, just do that.
Just the sod?
No.
Good, great.
You're going a foot down, right?
Yes, so we remove the top foot of soil, we bring back another foot of clean top soil. Their borrow area is on Highway A between Hillsborough and Fats, because it's local. The sod comes from a sod farm across the river in Illinois. All of the materials they use in the project has to meet our specs, and, you know, one of those is obviously a low concentrations of lead. Lead is naturally occurring if you found in Missouri soils, most soils throughout the United States have some measurable amount of lead in it. But what we consider background would be, you know, less than 100 parts per million in this area. So, less than four times the concentration that, you know, our cleanup concentration. So, we, you know, guarantee that the soil would be at least less than 100 parts per million. Most of it runs about 50 parts per million, which is background.
Do you really expect the funds to cover the total cost?
Yes, the only thing that we can't pay for, like, you know, they just described, you know, we have to pay for any damages that we do, you know, the excavation disposal, backfill, sod, all of that's covered under the contract. But the, the one thing that we can't do is water that sod after it's laid, which is one of the concerns about the irrigation system. And obviously, it's going to be through our advantage to have a working irrigation system because if it's not watered, it's going to die. So, you know, that's...
It works now.
Exactly.
Well, don't you come back and water for a certain amount of time anyway?
On normal residential properties, yes. We would water for about a week, and then the contractor asks the homeowners to water and take up water from their own. You know, they've, they've had to work special agreements with some folks who are elderly or disabled, not able to actually do the watering themselves, and obviously, that's a special circumstance. But here, they've got a 4,000 gallon water truck, there's no way that they can water that, and then that's more traffic coming in and out every day, pumping water, hauling it in, unloading. It's, irrigation systems work much more efficiently. You're going to get a better soak on the ground, you can control the time of day when it's being watered. It's much more effective to have that working irrigation system.
We don't have a timeline really as to when that would be laid?
No, but with warm season grasses, they have to be laid during the summer. Usually, that's, that season ends in September. Maybe if it's, if it's kind of a warmer end of summer, you know, start of fall, they may allow cutting into part of September, but generally, the middle of August is, is the last window for that zorja, the warm season grasses.
After the grass is laid, the sod's laid, how long do you think to wait for the field to use?
Well, that's, that's a really good question, and it really kind of depends on how it takes, what kind of weather we get. But, you know, that's something that we would have to, to work with the school on, determining when the best time, when it's, when it's, you know, ready for use, regular, full use.
It probably wouldn't be ready through the winter, it would probably be ready for spring.
But they have, they have a good plan?
You've put a plan in place for the youth and...
Our plan is, we talked about today, and to me, we have to do what we have to do, and we will figure it out. Meaning, and when I say we, football, soccer, everyone that's going to be affected, we'll work together and we'll figure it out, because at the end of the day, we want what's best for our school, for our community, for our kids. So, if that means we have to make some concessions, we have to do some things, then, my gosh, we're going to do those things. If, if we have to not be on that field all year, which is what I'm just going to go ahead and prepare for, we've got the field up top, we've got the outfield, you guys all passed approval of our facility usage agreement, which allows the youth to use the turf and things of that nature now. So, we just have to work with them on Saturday. Now, when they practice, we've been using them a lot back in the backfields behind the junior high, so we would continue to do that on the junior high baseball and junior high softball fields. And then on Saturdays, if it didn't conflict with us, or if it did conflict with us, we would work it out with the youth in scheduling their games on the weekends. The youth league, I haven't talked to Mr. Kirkpatrick or those that run the league yet, but I'm assuming that worst-case scenario, they would play on a Sunday if they absolutely had to. We'll try to avoid that at all costs. But we will work through those Saturdays in doing everything we can to help them out and getting them on the turf. We have the field behind the bleachers over there. The only logistical nightmare we're going to have is our varsity, our, our high school football practice because we dress on this side of the highway and we practice over here. So, now are we going to, when we dress, we're going to bust them back over? Again, things that we can figure out that, at the end of the day, are worth it, and that's just what we have to do. We may stagger practices, we may, you know, there's, there's options that we have, we just have to sit down and really start to hammer those out because it's going to creep up on us before we know it. And at, and at the end of the day, truth be told, we'd rather have it done moving forward, knowing that it's done, that we're good to go, than know what we know and not know anything about it.
And that's kind of our timeline, we have two options, do it, put in for it now, or wait till next, as soon as school's out next year. So, I mean, and we're 50 behind right now, so it's north west, 50 homes, north west. So, a good man's going to help.
Help us out.
We're hoping for, for the weather to break, and I've actually, I have a meeting after our meeting today with the contractor. They're looking into, you know, renting some bigger equipment, hiring some more local trucking contractors to help with the hauls. Their equipment, I was just informed, is, I don't know if you've seen these bulldozers, but for the final grade, the bulldozer has two GPS receivers on it. And it communicates to a total station. So, the grading should, we should be able to correct some grading issues that are there now. So, we might end up with a much better field in the end.
The track from one foot is seven foot.
Seven feet.
Yeah, seven feet out. You're running up on the ladder.
We wouldn't be able to correct something like that because we're only excavating foot.
But we'll still keep the crown, like...
Exactly, exactly.
All that stuff.
Right.
Fourth quarter.
What we need in that case, you know, this, this contractor, to my knowledge, has never done a big football field like this before, but EPA has been involved with it in St. Francis County, Washington County, Madison County, all of those counties, the school districts where we had meetings just like this, we had to go in and do football fields, baseball fields, school grounds. You're lucky that you only have one area, there's some schools that had, in, you know, Bonterre and Delove's, the entire school all the way around.
This contractor didn't do the North County one?
No, no, this, this contractor was working in Omaha before this contract started out, Omaha, Nebraska. And, you know, these contracts, they have limited lives. So, you know, this contractor was a guaranteed base period, they performed okay in that period, we give them an option period. They're currently starting their second option period, so the third year of a potential four-year contract. So, you know, there's some things that have to happen for them to get the next year. So, we're, that's why, you know, once the, the option year was awarded a week and a half ago, that's when we knew that we were going to be able to do this, this project under this contract period.
My concern is, let me bring it out here, because of all the questions we had today, I'm sure we could ask them questions all night, they're probably repetitive, so...
Lisa, I can tell you that I've done this exact project before, not because of lead...
So, a lot. He did my house last fall.
Well, I mean, football field, but in everything he told us today, I think we're right on.
If you don't mind me asking, what was your experience like? I don't remember doing a closeout with you. Well, no, it's, it's good to have this open discussion about it.
No, it was fine, it was painless. Once they took the yard, it seemed forever until the dirt came back.
Right.
And that was kind of, you know, fun.
It is, and it's, it's a very, especially when it's something as personal as your front yard, you know, that's...
But, but the grass that did come back, the sod was beautiful, it took well, and it's, we have a very shady house, and it's still, still very green, it was pretty all winter, so the sod was good, the quality was good. And we had hills and it didn't wash away, the dirt.
Right, right. The, the primary complaints that we have with this contractor start with communication, where they may not be communicating to a homeowner this week here about why there's a delay in the time that it was excavated until the time it was backfilled and sod was laid. It's a primary complaint that we do, we would have liked to have heard some more communication going on there.
Oh, it, it was pretty painless, it was just...
And the second thing is the, is the amount of time that it took?
Yes.
And then when there are repairs that need to be done, having those repairs done in the time...
And they did, there were a few, a couple of our trees had some issues from the bulldozer, but they came and fixed those right away and did, anything that we had asked, they came and repaired. Two of our drain pipes had to be fixed, and they replaced all of the coordinated pipe that came down the hill.
It doesn't last very long.
No.
It doesn't handle that kind of component very well, but...
But it was, it was painless, it was just kind of long.
Sure.
I don't remember how long it was, but a couple months it took.
Right. And, and, you know, that's something to keep in mind, the shovels go in the ground, they can excavate when, when the soil is a little bit damp, that's not a problem, as long as it can come out of buckets in the back of trucks. It can't backfill and grade when the soil is damp. It, it just doesn't compact right, and it's, it's like mop and slop. It's, it just spreads it out and it just looks for a mess. So, delays will happen, once excavation starts and we get rain, that's when the delays start piling up. So, until that sod is laid, we're really at the mercy of weather, and that's the kinds of things that can delay the progress on it, so...
In the, in the spring, if we get some big settling, because I know you said we'll have to sign off, but in the spring, if there's a bunch of settling, will they, is that like a one year?
You, yeah, yes. You control when you close out the property. Whoever is the authorized signature on that, you know, they're, the, the company will call when the sod's laid and they feel like everything's laid back the way it should be, they're going to call whoever your contact person is, confirm that everything's been put back the way it is, and then try to set up a date to do what we call a closeout sidewalk. I don't know if you went through that or not. So, you know, you control when that happens. If you're not ready, for whatever reason, you can say, yeah, everything's fine, we want to see how this settles over the winter, tell them that. Schedule us in for, you know, May, and, and we'll, we'll talk to you then. So, you know, that, you're, you're really in the driver's seat on this, and, you know, I, I want to make sure that you're clear that signing that does not, does not in any way commit you or guarantee you having this work done. It's, you know, this is just saying, we're authorized to take the next step, and the next step is that pre-excavation sidewalk. And, you know, making sure that we have the list of commitments together that the administration, the board, and Coach here is, is wanting to see outlined in this agreement. So, once we get that set in place, you make the final signature on that, then that gives them the authorization actually to move equipment on and, and start the work. So, at any point in this time, you can pull that access agreement and say, we don't grant access anymore. Anyone is, you know, able to do that. You can even do it after the shovel goes in the ground. I asked you to not do that, though, because now you've got a hole in the ground that needs to be fixed, and the only way you can do that is finishing the job. So, once they get started, it's best to let it run, run its course.
And you're saying, if everything goes perfect, we're looking at first of July, right, end of, mid, mid August?
I would, I would put it late July, like everything went perfect, if we can get started in June.
Oh, get started in June.
Right, I, I really think you're looking at about a six-week project.
So, it'll be done before August.
If, if everything went perfectly and we can start in June.
And then the other thing is, we talked about Doc coming up with the letter, public letter to concerned parents that finds out what's going on, and you're going to work with us on getting that imposed.
Sure, if we can get, we have Community Involvement Board, maybe is what they're called, and that's their job is to, is to work with communities on how to get the message out, what kinds of facts points you want listed there. You know, this is really, as far as contamination goes, kind of a best-case scenario because it's in one area and, you know, it's, it's a, it's a field, it's not a playground, it's not elementary, you know, school kids or kindergarten, preschool-aged kids playing on a contaminated playground every day. That's a worst-case scenario. So, in, in this case, you know, we've got decent access, I looked at the road today, it's a pretty well straight shot back there. So, there's a lot of things working in your benefit, you know, that, that aren't going to cause problems that we've, you know, experienced at some other sites that we've worked on. But, yeah, in the best-case scenario, I really think it's pushing it to say...
Well, I'm going to make a motion when you accept the contract.
Second.
So, you're making a motion that we enter into the side cleanup?
Yes.
When you get all this form signed?
Remediation.
Remediation.
That's a remediation access agreement, right.
Second, do I have a question?
All right, so John Lewis and Angie Toshin, second.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just think Ed and Ray have agreed, they've got a good handle on it, starting with you.
And, you know, I asked that we, we do keep the communication open, you have my contact information. If there's any issue that, that comes up with the contractor, whether you're not able to get ahold of them, or you see something and you can't get a response back, I need to be involved in that, so, you know, please, please keep that in mind.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to enter into net remediation agreement, is that what you thought?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor, show hands. Very good. Okay. Next item on the agenda is in regard to the instructional coach position. We're looking for information, your thoughts, your comments about the second position that has opened up, and I had board members talk to me about changing that position possibly, changing the format of way, way this was going to be set up, whether we maintain with one or we have, still have two. So, we're looking for discussion and information at this point.
All right, so we've had Mrs. Rain, Mrs. Silverbrand had some discussions, as well as Mrs. Luby on the position that's been vacated with the promotion or advancement of Leslie Marchetti from an instructional coach position to your assistant principal at the intermediate building. And if you would, we can have those later in the month if they'd like, and kind of share with you some of their thoughts, and start the discussion for us. And kind of share with you some of their thoughts and start the discussion process.
We, we brought some information. We, there was a presentation made in February. And so, not everyone was here for that, but we wanted to hand out that. We also have a couple of additional items. One is just a, shows how many times that the coaches contacted teachers or have face-to-face contacted teachers up through the month of February. We do not have Marchetti for May.
It does not include phone calls and things of that nature.
This was mainly going into an observation or something of that nature. So.
Can I draw attention to that?
Yes.
Don't pay attention to the date that it's entered because that might necessarily, might not necessarily be the date that we went into that classroom. That was the date we inserted into the computer. So, sometimes we would just have a bunch of them and put them all in at one time. So, that might be a little skewed if you think, "Oh, she was in there twenty times." And that's not right.
So, what we wanted to do is to give you the information. We know there are some questions. And so, giving you the other opportunity would be to ask us some questions rather than just keep going over this. I'm not sure how much of the, what you have in front of you that you're familiar with, or if you have a question about it, or if there's something that we don't have in front of you. But we felt like it might be better that we would answer questions than just give you a lot of information.
Teacher observation, the majority would be. Well, and my question is, how many of those, or what percentage of those would you say is principal request?
Okay, let me explain those teacher observations. And not every one of them. Okay, you're going to see ELA on there alive. We had an implementation of a new ELA reading program. So, we went and we observed every ELA teacher K three twelve. And the reason that we did that was to see how the materials were being utilized, to see what was working and what wasn't working. We have a lot of transitions between each building. So, what we did was first we went in and we observed. Then we collaborated on what we saw. Then we went back to the teachers and planned a lesson. I can't remember if it, it was probably at that point it wasn't every ELA teacher. But we planned lessons with several of them and then co-taught them or observed again.
The sample of each, of the different grade levels.
Right. All, no, it was all grade levels that we did that K twelve. But it wasn't every single teacher that.
And this scheduling, you see right here, was how we started out scheduling, like, you know, how much. So, we added that before you all came.
And so, what we were able to do, another thing that we were trying to put in place was we came up with writing progressions that spanned K through twelfth grade. So, what is, what is writing supposed to look like? We came up with a structure. What's, what's a kindergartner supposed to be able to do with a structure in first grade or second grade or all the way through high school? So, we made this progression. So, that was another thing that we went into the classrooms and observed. And we, we took writing samples from every classroom. And then we developed some training that we did at the very beginning of the year. We have not done it with the junior high and high school yet. That will be done at the beginning of the year. But we went in and we said, "Okay, here's the, here's the writing process that you're supposed to follow. Here's how it's supposed to be implemented." And we showed writing samples from every grade level and said, "Okay, here's what a kindergartner has done. Here's what a first grader." And it was amazing to see them at that point, especially the old, the like fifth and sixth grade stands out in my mind to see, "Oh, my gosh, a kindergartner actually wrote that or a first grader wrote that." So, that they could see the expectations and what the kids are actually doing. So, we've been able to implement those kinds of things to span and keep consistency with programs and implementing things K through twelfth grade. And our focus this year was ELA. And that's why most of it says observation because we were observing, trying to figure out how those things were working and what could we do to make it better. And then we would meet with those teachers or with the principals and say, "Okay, in the primary, they're using this and this. But they're not using this building and they have it and it might help." One of the biggest things that was eye-opening to me, since I'm not in the classroom anymore every day, was the factor of type. I can tell you two specific lessons I went into doing. I ran out of time. I'm like, "Oh, man," you know, and it kind of flopped. But that wasn't a bad thing because then I was able to sit with that teacher and go, "Oh, wait a minute. This didn't work and here was why. And what would I do differently with that?" And then I was able to say, "Okay, maybe in the third and fourth grade building, they're doing it like this and they seem to be getting it accomplished. And so, maybe you want to try this." So, that was one of the big jobs that we did this year and that's why you're seeing it look kind of like that. Teacher requests are principal requests. I don't think I documented if it was a request or it wasn't a request. Sometimes we get them, sometimes we don't. Sometimes we get individual teachers, sometimes we don't. But the main focus is trying to keep that continuity, but to be there for those kinds of things too when they come up. And a lot of, a lot of the requests that we do get are for resources as well. They might not want us to come in there, but they might say, "I need such and such. Will you please find it for me?" We find it and bring it to them or whatever.
But this is in addition to the support and facilitation of curriculum writing and that whole process.
And STEM is another thing that's going on right now that's going to be huge with the new Missouri Learning Standards and Science. They're related to the next generation standards, which are way more rigorous, that go right along with STEM. So, the junior high and high school have the Project Lead The Way things going on through Project Lead The Way. The primary through sixth grade, K through six, they have a lot of teachers that are going to what's called STEM PACs, which is a training in STEM, which I am able to go, or we are able to go to the leadership series that teaches us about that. So, the more I was able to come back, we'd met with the principals. And something that came up is through Project Lead The Way, they have what's called Launch, which is for those younger grade levels. Well, is that something that we want to put into our K through six? Or is it not? And we're, I'm in the process now of communicating with the man who does the Launch program and finding schools that do Launch and seeing, "Okay, do we want to do that? Or do we just want to keep training the teachers that, the way we are and feeding them into that program?" Because it will work both ways, but there's advantages and disadvantages. So, it's kind of my job to figure out, "Do we want to do that? Do we not want to do that?" And communicate that to the principals. And we do meet with the principals once a month. And, and that keeps the communication from per them writing to whatever's going on with them with the principals. I mean, it's kind of a good tool.
And this has evolved. I mean, it started out to look at certain kinds of support and it was, you know, to support teachers 100 percent. It was not evaluative in nature. It was not something that teachers were, we didn't want them to fear and think somebody was coming in and, you know, observing and reporting back. And we, the instructional coaches worked hard not to have that happen. So, but as time has gone on, then we know that when we're trying to implement new series, when we're, and we're going to be doing a lot of that, we're going to come up with math. We're going to come into science, social studies. There's, there's a lot of changes going on. That administrative part kind of goes on behind the scenes to help teachers with implementing those types of things and having that time to instruct is, that's the important part. And it's, it's kind of like, you know, you, you see the, the stage and you see everything going on on the front lines of the stage. But back behind, we've got all people with the lights, with the cameras, with, you know, the cue cards, with getting everybody out there on time, you know, those kinds of things. And it takes all of that. And will every teacher use that? No. I mean, I look at it like medical care. You know, we have urgent care. We have doctor's offices. We have hospitals. Not everybody's going to use urgent care, but there's a lot of people that do. A lot of people go to, you know, it just depends. But it's there and we, we find that there's a huge amount of support that goes out to the teachers. And every time an instructional coach talks to a teacher, we, in effect, actually touch 20 to 25 students. So, even though, you know, if you're going out to 10 teachers, then you've, you've touched 200 tips. So, because those teachers use those things. And it's just like with the practices as far as Mary did the one lesson and said, "Wow, it kind of flopped." But rather than 15 teachers having to figure that out, one person does it. And then you pass along that information and you share practices. And then you can move through that series. You can move through those techniques. Will other teachers, can some teachers and maybe many go ahead and figure that out on their own? Yes. But it is nice to have this type of a situation where we are able to share those best practices with our teachers. And, you know, we don't have that K six continuum here. And so, that transition has, you know, it's always been a stumbling block to an extent for us. I feel like this has been one of the main tools we've had to help us with those transitions because teachers know what other teachers are doing. And that's, that's huge.
Why don't they get that information when they meet like in their grade level? I mean, when, when all the fourth grade teachers meet, don't they share what they're doing then?
To an extent, but they don't have that many opportunities. This way, we have someone that can come in and work with a teacher, you know, on Wednesday. You may not have a meeting together as a team until, you know, once every two weeks or, you know, if you wait until professional development days, that's once a month. So, those are the types of things that we try and do. But that, that information is shared as well as information from other grade levels.
And other buildings.
Mm-hmm. And other buildings. So, it's not just about fourth grade sharing information. It's about fourth grading, getting information from fifth grade, from third grade.
Because you have your vertical teams and your PLS.
Right. And those meet a couple of times to, you know, three times a year. Curriculum, they meet more often when we're writing curriculum, of course. But it's still a limited process. And so, that information, the resources and things that we glean from those opportunities is out there through the webpage that the instructional coaches put together. And a lot of teachers use that or get information. The digital side of our curriculum, the part of technology, things like Ames West, those are all administrative type things that it's not used every day. But when it is used, they're very busy.
Do we have actual data on how much it's used? I mean, have you documented how much it's used by the teachers?
As far as the.
Like numbers-wise, how many times was, like, the webpage accessed or?
Oh, I'm, I'm probably.
But you don't have that right now.
What do you see as a need coming up for your coaches in the coming years? I know we've got the learning standards.
We have to realize more core content areas which we have never been asked to do before. Our math curriculum will be rewritten completely, which will then lead us to hopefully, you know, purchase and select a new math series. So, in looking back at this past year, to see basically that contact log was mostly ELA. That will also need to be done for math. And then you're going to get into assessments. We're not assessed on our new standards until the following school year. So, you're going to get into that whole assessment piece. And we all know that it's two years from now they can change everything.
But your classroom teachers, your classroom teachers should be the ones choosing curriculum. Your learning coaches don't choose your curriculum.
You are correct, but they facilitate that process.
And when you say facilitate the process, what do you mean?
Well, we have, when we have, say, English language arts that we had. Okay, that's 12 grade levels. And we have 12 teachers per grade level that are teaching that K one and two, three and four. So, we have a lot of teachers there. We have to pull out representatives to do some of that. And then we have them go back. We have to do some pilot work. But all that has to be orchestrated. That has to be, the information has to be taken back to our administrators. The administrators also go through and look at that type of thing. So, it's a combined process. Then we have, you know, six.
But I mean, what exactly do the?
What do you do?
Yeah, what's your role in that?
My role is to facilitate that meeting when we get them all together. I, I go through anything that's new from DSC. I go through, we go through the standards. We look at the standards. We write a curriculum map. We look at what it looks like from K to 12. We, then when we get ready to write, we talk about the backward design process and UDD and how does that process work? What does that look like? Then we show them how to enter that curriculum into the curriculum writing tool, which is BYOC. So, we're there. When they put that in there, it goes in in three different stages. And just one for two people. We have big meetings and then they break off into their own. And then when they get out on their own, we are available to them to go meet with them. We just did practical arts and we met, I can't tell you how many times practical arts called and said, "Can you come over here and make sure I'm doing this right or telling this to me?" Those kinds of things. So, that's, that's, that's what my role.
So, you meet, you meet together and then you basically teach the group how to write, write whatever it is they need to write and put it into the computer. And you do that together as a group. And then you break down and you go to the computer lab and you start actually inputting the details. The teachers are doing that, but you're circulating you and Jana while you're doing that.
From there, they don't finish when they run out of time.
Right. And then they ta, but they get part of it done. So, they've learned some of it.
Right.
And have some practice. And then they have a timeline where they have to finish the rest of it on their own. Or you may have another.
They can take a release day or whatever. Or sometimes they do on their, on full PD day on the time that's there. They choose to use that time and that call and say, "Can you come?"
And that's why we try and be very flexible because the different teachers have different timeframes open.
Right.
So, trying to get in there and not take away instruction, more instructional time.
But during that facilitating time, you need three people to do that because it would be one of you.
Actually, in this case, well, we have.
Well, two coaches.
It's going to be interesting when we start to do all four core areas because of the way the PD schedule is written and how many groups are going to be working at the same time. Really, it's going to, two people is.
So, you'll have to buy yourselves out.
I haven't figured out exactly how we're going to stagger that because somebody has to be there leading them through that.
So, that's just the curriculum.
That's just the curriculum.
Right. And then implementing that, that is why we wanted to go through. We set up the schedule, wanted to give the teachers support because there was a lot of different types of, there are all these components. I don't know how that is. And so, how to use those components, how not to get overwhelmed, you know, to determine that these are the ones that are, you know, the ones you really want to try. But, you know, getting feedback and giving feedback. I mean, those were the things that helped solidify and implement that series.
I think one thing we're missing too is our assistance for learning and our focus professional development. Then they also.
Right. We organize, we organize all of that professional development, which is now teacher choice. Next year, they're going to have six instead of five days where they get that professional development.
The organization, you all go places and you bring that. It's a central.
I suppose you bring all that information back to us.
Do you do that with the PDC committee or do you just do it all by yourself?
They, we work together with them. But as far as, I mean, they kind of ask us, "Okay, what are you doing here?" And we kind of collaborate that way. But as far as setting it up, we do the whole schedule. We send out the surveys. We have the teachers. They decide if they want to be a presenter. They fill out an application that shows what they want to present. We sit down with them either individually or in groups and say, "Okay, what is it you're wanting to do?" Then from there, we make a schedule. Then in August, it'll be August 11th this year, we provide training for them of how, how do you do a presentation for an adult learner? It's different than a child. So, we do a whole day of training. We talk about adapting that presentation for your audience because we have to hit everybody. Some people are doing like a presentation for K six, but then the next time they're doing seven, 12. So, how do you adapt that same thing for a different audience? So, we talk about all of those kinds of things. The other thing that we do, sometimes they get stuck when they're doing that presentation and they'll call us and say, "Will you come sit down with me and look at this? And what do you think? Do I need to tweak this? Do I need to change this? Or I'm having trouble. I'm a, I'm a high school teacher, but I'm presenting to K six." And that's a challenge for me. Can you tell me some ways that I could do this a little bit better?
And the whole purpose behind this is to develop strong teacher leaders. And that the teachers, we've gotten a lot of strong feedback saying that they like hearing from other teachers. And that's why this, the model of instructional coach was successful, I think, was because it was teachers, working with teachers. And, you know, there was that level of support and knowledge not so far away from the classroom that the teachers valued. And because of the way that the instructional coaches have also maintained that contact at the classroom and in looking at different lessons, presenting lessons or, you know, observing or whatever, those things may be, there's still that strong connection there. And we have such a, you know, 250 teachers. And we have a large number of teachers that we, even though we collaborate at the building levels, there's still that need for that vertical collaboration or knowledge to be passed back and forth. And like the professional development committee, this year, they did most of the work with the vertical team as far as, that's what they wanted to do. They wanted to provide information. They wanted to provide information, resources, and to develop some things for the, those vertical teams to address some of the transition needs. So, that's what the professional development committee did, plus worked with the instructional coaches, and with me, and with all of that we know, you know, we're doing this year with curriculum and instruction and assessment. So, I mean, they meet four times a year, so they can't lead the charge on all of this. But, um, they wanted to be able to have a part in that. So, that's, you know, it's a combined effort from that standpoint.
My question is, so what do we, what do we, what's the question here?
That's, that's what I was, I mean, that's why we wanted questions, because we weren't sure, we were not aware of exactly...
Right, and then one time, so, and you didn't say we don't need to fill the third one.
Well, the question had been asked, do we need to fill that second one?
Do we need to fill this one of those?
So, earlier this year...
And we survived one.
Earlier this year, Jana came to us...
Yeah.
Saying that she, we needed three. And due to, um, financial reasons, we eliminated one. So, I'm really confused. I, the thought going from three to one, when Jana, and then we had Ms. Looby, Ms. Corman, and Ms. Marchetti in front of us a couple months ago, saying what needed to be done and needs. I'm not sure why this came up.
Well, and aligning curriculum, we're, 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 building is very chopped up, right? So, does that make it harder to align the curriculum from grade level?
Well, you have to start with the grade level, then you have to go with the grade level above and below, and then you have to...
And that would be the process. They should...
Move it from there to make sure it's K twelve, that's the line.
Was the original intent of the instructional coach to work with curriculum?
It was to do a combination of things. It was to support teachers, and since teachers are involved in the curriculum revision process, then that was part of that support. Uh, it was also to improve achievements. Well, strong curriculum, of course, is, you know, implemented well with instruction and assessed well is part of what strengthens academics. So, that support to teachers was what the instructional coaches were there for. And I looked at my old notes, because when I came back, I thought, you know, it was one hundred percent support for teachers to provide valuable, you know, tools and resources for our teachers to use with our students. So, even though you don't step right into the classroom and work with those students, you're stepping into the classroom, working with the teachers, and you're also helping them find resources when they're writing curriculum. What's a, what's a, a strong learner activity? Uh, you know, those types of things. How do we work with those things? And so, because we have so many people writing curriculum, like with practical arts, we had a number of people writing, I can't remember, was it twelve or twelve? You know, I mean, trying to get around to everybody and all the courses that had to be written, and the way that they were trying to integrate the project, Lead the Way, and those types of things. We hear more from teachers, I, I wasn't trained to write curriculum, no, but we need your input, because you are the content area specialist. We are the person that's trying to help you put that on tape or, or wherever we say.
So, my, my question is, you were asking about kind of numbers. How, how is it divided up? Does a coach spend most of their time during doing curriculum-related activities? Or are they in classrooms that, you know, more than anything? Because we have, we talked about the P L C and the vertical teams, and we have a mentoring program as well.
And I, I will say this, this year, I feel like that I relied on our instructional coaches a lot to do curriculum writing. The reason I did that is because I was involved extensively with doing two monitoring sides. I monitored, we had DESI monitoring for, um, special education and for federal programs. That was a year-long experience. I'm thankful to say it's over, and we move on.
Well, is that what we, we need the most help with? Is it the curriculum that's, that is the most important?
This next year is going to be a lot of curriculum support.
So, Mary and Emily and Melissa, they're gonna work on curriculum, so there's not gonna be as much of the observations and the, the strategy giving possibly? Because you're gonna be spending a whole lot more time with curriculum. And it's, it's kind of the nature of the...
Well, that's, I was gonna say, that has been the nature of this job since we've had it.
It's like changes.
Wherever they pull me, I'm like, it's like, okay, we need you for this, okay, we need you for this. Am I always available if somebody wants me to do something? I make time for that. You know, if somebody specifically calls me and says, will you blah, 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 well, absolutely, I will do that.
So, is this job...
Sometimes you just never, I mean, some years...
So, should this job be more curriculum oriented than, instead of...
I think it's more teacher support oriented. I don't know that you can chop it up into curriculum and professional development.
Because almost that is... Well, because you have, I mean, you have all these different avenues for, for assistance, yeah, whether it's a mentoring program, the P L Cs, the, the, uh, vertical teams, where you can meet with all the different grade levels. And then you have the professional development committee too.
Right.
You know, but I don't know, I just, I just felt like it was so heavy on curriculum.
And, and, and that's, that's a true statement. This, this year, it really has been, because we were number one, trying to help implement that E L A. So, there was a lot of observation in the classroom, there was a lot of support there, seeing how that curriculum and that material resource area was working. That is all part of the curriculum aspect. This next year, with DESI and the fact that we are gonna have four areas, it, it is gonna be heavy on curriculum revision, looking at our standards, looking at how we implement certain things. But then as we move on through that, then you're gonna have more on developing assessments. So, that's supporting teachers to develop those strong formative and summative assessments. Then the, you know, the following year's gonna be using your data. How are we, you know, what kind of information are we getting back from that? So, it's going to continue to evolve. I mean, curriculum actually is strong, you know, writing, revision, instructions, and assessment is everything, so all the time. So, um, it's, it's going to overlap and mesh, but I don't know if that's answering your question. I don't know that we have to say, I, I would, I still think it's strong instructional support.
And the other thing that has been brought to our attention was the usage by just elementary levels instead of secondary levels.
We've not, I've not heard very much positive at all from the secondary.
I will tell you, I, I'll be honest with you. We probably are not called as much at the secondary level. As far as the E L A went this year, we have planned next year, the plan next year, we didn't do the writing training, like I said earlier, for the, um, junior high and high school. Actually, there was, um, Kristen Merrily did do some of that, because it kind of originated with them, this, this, um, structure that we're using. So, she kind of already did that with them. But our plan next year is to meet with the teachers who are not E L A teachers, and show them the structure, like the science, social studies, the other core areas. What does this look like? What should you be expecting when you're expecting writing from your students? So that we are taking that, excuse me, taking that, you know, to the non-E L A teachers as well. That hasn't happened yet.
We got the annotations that they developed.
Oh, yeah, we do have, we do have annotations that we developed that go K twelve. Um, and we made posters, those posters are ready to be handed out next year. Those are gonna be used in every, every classroom, the teachers will be, they already pretty much know how to use them, but, um, it took us a while to get those, we ran into some problems. But as far as in the classroom, one-on-one, yes, we're in some classrooms up there, but not as much, I, I'll be honest with you, not as much as the primary. Because we're called, I mean, we're just pulled that way more often.
Well, I've just heard that, um, there's very little that you can help the high school staff with. I mean, that, that, I mean, that's what the mindset...
Well, the mindset, and I think the mindset is that probably, because they look at me as an elementary teacher, because that is my background.
And there's a lot of resentment there, frankly, that, you know, how can an elementary teacher come in and tell me what to do?
Well, I can't tell you your content. I'll be the first one to tell you. I cannot tell you your content, but I can show you a good instructional strategy that will help to teach me that content, and that's the concept. But sometimes...
And those that you find that, I mean, high school teachers that do, do that, do find out that instructional strategies are across the board, you know, it's not...
You know, and we have, we, I, I will say probably not this year, but in the past, I mean, I can think of some instructional strategies that we have shown to high school teachers that they use, and they were like, oh, I can't believe this is working with high school. Yeah. They were catering strategies and things like that, but they worked really well. But sometimes it's, you know, I'll be honest with you, high school teachers and elementary teachers have different mindsets, they really do.
And that A F L is good too.
I guess I have one other question, except for Mrs. Looby. These jobs, this instructional coach job has transitioned into an administrative job every other time, except I think you've been with the instructional, um...
Yeah, I've never...
You've never transitioned?
You were the original.
If it's...
I'm the original, I'm gonna be the original, because I'm not gonna...
Okay.
That never happened, I'm not certified to do that, and I have nothing to do with it.
No, I mean, I, I mean, which, I admire your dedication to this position, but if we're just using this position as a stepping stone into an administrative job, which is what it appears to be in some cases, then that's a concern, I think.
Because the two previous persons that we've had in this position went into administration.
Right, I mean, so there's no continuity in your, you know, so we're not, we're not keeping instructional coaches, we're having to get new ones, you know, periodically. And I, that's a concern of mine.
I, I mean...
Definitely, but I, I think the worst thing is you're retiring this year, and she's gonna have...
I know, the more I'm standing, I'm like, I'm so sorry.
I mean, she's gotta learn what she had, and then Mary's by herself, and she had three that were well-established, and now we have...
But yet, we split Jana's job.
Except, except Melissa doesn't have to do special education.
But I should have been able to do that I couldn't do, because I was taking...
Right.
There's a lot of things that, you know, hopefully Mrs. Hildebrand will now be able to get back to doing.
But I mean, from the outside, you're looking at, you know, the, the principals and the teachers, they're looking at, they've had three people doing this job. One's gone, and we need to fill another one with a new person, with a new administrator on board. So, I mean, I know Mrs. Looby's got her control, but I guess the reason we're talking about it is because, should we fill her, or should we move her to some curriculum?
We've got so many other needs financially in the district, and, you know, that, that I just feel like are more critical.
I just want you to understand too, though, that all of these things, it's not that the job's not going to get done, it's that things are going to have to be shifted back to, back to some teachers, back to some building administrators, and things of that nature. So, just so you're aware that it's not, we can't just leave some of this behind, because curriculum only has one person. It's, it's gonna have to get done, it's gonna have to...
And probably Lisa's the only educator here that has worked with instructional coaches. I have been learning, and I have seen, like you say, evolve. You know, when I came on the board, I started asking questions, because this was a whole new scene to me. And I saw it as being more curriculum-based, et cetera. So, this year was the first year that I saw that, you know, with the P D setup, that to me, it really did kind of get in the classrooms and help. But, you know, prior to this year, I hadn't seen that.
Right.
Um, and when, I've had some conversations with building administrators two years ago, I kind of did the same thing. And there were a couple that said, you know, there, I always ask, I try to ask the magic one question. And at that time, two years ago, um, there were a couple that said, I would like to have an instructional coach in my building. When I asked that question this time around, this is kind of pheningon, what you just mentioned. Um, it wasn't that, and not devaluing, I'm not devaluing instructional coach positions, don't take that. But it was a homeschool specialist at secondary level that had, deals with behavior and psychologists, a reading teacher, seats in the alternative school, another S F E D teacher. So, you know, it's like instructional coach or the shift of the needs that the administrators, you know, shared.
The perception of the staff, their perception of need is, is changing.
Yeah, and I wonder, well, for, to me, those responses, to me, shared that the need of student body is changing the community, um, which was a major, major concern. And, and going back to the, to the four areas, okay, E L A, you know, I knew the, the new materials, and that has all just been done. So, have you looked at the new learning standards? Like, are they pretty much already in line with E L A?
E L A is gonna be the easiest one, because they are the most in line. Math's gonna be a big undertaking, because we're redoing everything.
That is gonna happen anyway.
Right.
Right.
Science is gonna be huge, I think.
And that's why we're involved.
Social studies is gonna be interesting, because that has a lot of changes, where they're actually wanting to shift Missouri history from fourth grade to third grade.
Right.
But they're telling us, okay, that's what we're saying, but you don't necessarily absolutely have to do that, because that's not a tested area until they get to high school. If we can still cover all of these things, even if it's not necessarily at that grade level, it's still gonna work. So, that's gonna be kind of an interesting one, I would say.
Are they changing history?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we're changing, we're just changing what's gonna be taught.
I just, yeah, very practically, if this position is not replaced.
I'm gonna cry.
Have you cried before in your life? Yes.
No, not like this.
What, what do you see your job reverting to or changing to next year?
Well, I guess it's all gonna be, um, I'm gonna be Melissa's best friend, and it's all gonna be curriculum things.
I was gonna ask, you know, we have Project Lead the Way, we were talking about maybe the launch program for the younger grades. And then I also saw something on here about discussion on progress monitoring and R T I, how we're gonna measure if R T I is successful or not.
Right, that's a big thing that's, that's going on right now, that we're having lots of meetings and looking at data, and trying to look at some restructuring, and so...
Sure, that restructuring, yes.
But if you're focused on... We're part of that process, because we're in every building and can kind of see how it works.
But you kind of figure out, well, you won't have the time. And a large part of that R T I too, is that core, you know, we're talking about core instruction and those types of things. So, I mean, I feel like that could still be addressed, even though there's a lot of curriculum going on, that's still something that you all will probably, should need to say it, but, I mean...
How does the data get, if, if you don't have another person, how does all that data get managed in there?
Teachers, they're their own data, but from a district perspective, or even a building perspective, that, and the management of it, kids forget the passwords, it gets locked, things of that nature, that can be very cumbersome, we'll fall back on...
It's kind of like a session. I mean, the teachers administer all the, you know, assessment, math tests, things of that nature, but all that preparation work and getting it, make sure everything is lined out, and that all the rules are followed, all the training's done, everything is, you know, that, that's what falls under the administrative section. And just because of the platforms and the way we have all that, we have to make sure all that's put in there correctly, and it's, it's kind of an ongoing process through the entire map situation or E L C.
Well, Mary, you told me that teachers were doing more of their data collecting and planning out where the kids were gonna go in their groups anyway. It used to be the data team meeting.
I used to go to all the booths, yes.
Right, and you haven't been doing that.
But we're finding that that might be one of our problems that we're having, is now there's not a person that's continually kind of going with that.
Is that consistent?
Yeah, it's not consistent, I would say. Because some buildings now aren't looking at any pieces of data, they're just kind of taking little snippets and placing instead of looking at a broader picture. So, we're thinking that might be kind of a little bit of some of the problems that we're seeing with R T I.
It's good to see consistency for the K twelve and, and all that, but that was kind of one of those things we were wanting to evolve, to where all that training and data teams and all those things went on.
So, do they do that in the secondary level? Do they have all those data teams, and they, so secondary doesn't do that at all?
Well, if they do, the way they do it is not the same, and I've never been involved with their data. I've never been asked to.
And part of it is, they don't have a data management tool, and those are hard to find at the secondary level.
And ours is the AIMS Web?
Yes.
And every building uses AIMS Web, K room?
Six, six.
The other thing with the secondary level, their data teams are going, not going to look like what they do here at the intermediate, because chemistry, you know, that, you know, sort of on a much smaller scale too.
The one thing I saw here too was analysis of student behavior, and, and I'm assuming that you're hoping with maybe different instructional things?
That was a, a particular student, that a teacher was having difficulty with, that wanted me to observe the behaviors and come up with some strategies to try to help part with that child. with that child.
So, I mean, our original was, you said, let's get away with the third one, we're gonna get that back, so what's your recommendation?
No, it's because it's funny, that one has...
Sure.
And I mean, I still feel that there's a need for that second coach, based on what we're doing next year, same way.
They, because they will be doing...
And, you know, but I mean, all this, I mean, Melissa and I talked about this, you know, and, and I think that she's seen it anyways, from an administrative standpoint, that these types of things are going to be needed throughout the year, and the support that we can receive from the teachers is important, looking at what some, if there's things that secondary teachers need that we're not providing, you know, then those are things, I mean, we send out slays and things, and, you know, that's the type of thing that would help us make the program evolve, but, you know, that's a little bit different animal at the secondary level, they, you know, request different things, so it's, and which is fine, but it's just, you know, so we can address those, but my thought is, is yes, I would answer that with the yes, we do need the second coach. I felt like the third coach was awesome as well, but that was a funding issue. That was not because we didn't need that person.
Okay, so what if, I'll use our imagination, if we were not having all of these changes in our core content areas? You know, we weren't making, we were just working with math, which is what the usual rotation is, one subject basically per year, correct?
At least one, normally we've done more than one, we do like a practical arts or a foreign language.
Okay, to re-friend the career, but I mean, with all of the standards possibly changing, and, and were there huge changes in our standards?
As far as ELA, because we've went through it.
Right, but, and math has certainly changed, but, but science and social studies, are they basically the same? Are they huge changes?
Science, I think, is gonna be a pretty big undertaking, just, just from the standpoint, yeah, the vertical teams that we were in before were kinda going on.
If for whatever reason, we only had to work on math, basically, or, you know, that content area, which you still need to.
I would say yes, support because it supports our staff, and each time we have a revision year, you revise, and then you're implementing curriculum, then you're supporting that implementation process.
It's a constant cycle.
And so it's a cycle of that, and then trying to include, find out the learning strategies and the, the things that they, the, you know, lessons that they're using, are those the best ones, or do we need to add? Are the assessments common, and are we using, are we really assessing what we're, you know, those are the kinds of things, helping teachers realize how that's working as well. I think there's always, that, that type of support is always important, and I know that, you know, working on some of the assessments that are common has been something that the high school has been working on.
And the other half of my question, and I'm not trying to be rude, but because we now have a SED person, some of your responsibilities were eliminated or divided, or I don't know how we wanna say that, but that would give Melissa more opportunity to work with curriculum as well, correct?
She will. I was looking back at what I did as a curriculum and instruction person, and my plate was pretty full. Now, you know, then later on, it was added with assessment, that's another whole package. Then there has been, you know, then there are federal programs, and you have the things like, you know, your homeless and all those types of things that go on core data, most of, even though that, we worked through that with our technology, and we have a lot of that, we have somebody that puts that data in, we still have to have somebody to assist with some of that on determining how people are coded and how that works, and I, I did a lot of that, so, you know, I mean, the, my job kind of evolved as well to pay on some of those things. So I don't know if that's answering your question, but I feel like...
Will she have more freedom, though, to work with curriculum, I guess?
Yes, she will have more freedom, but right now, there's so much more to do.
And she's learning a lot, I get that, but she'll have more time.
I feel like, I can say, yes, you'll have more time to do all that curriculum that needs to be done, but...
Well, I'm just...
Yeah, I, no, it's, I mean, I totally see your point, I, and I'm not trying to downplay it, I'm just saying, unfortunately, we do have to address those curriculum changes, and we have to make sure that teachers feel comfortable implementing that curriculum, that they have built, they have strong instructional strategies, and the fact that they can choose the relevant materials that are flexible, if they have some type of instruction that is technology-based, but still have, you know, other types of instruction, but we're not there yet with the technology, it's...
Doc, what's your recommendation? Well, it's very plainly stated that, I mean, you have two administrators here, one that's been with you for a lot of years, telling me this is what you need. I mean, the hard part is, is aboard, you don't see the behind-the-scenes in every day, what they've laid out here is not everything that encompasses, they didn't talk about dealing with the new teachers, working with our new staff members. I'm not talking about mentor-mentee, I'm talking about instructional strategies and learning our curriculum, a semester reading hour tonight and said, that wasn't even talked about. There's a lot of things that these ladies do that no one sees, and it's hard to judge what they do when you're not walking in their shoes every day. And when you're a talented teacher, and you're on your game, and you don't need their assistance, then you don't think they do anything. But when you're that struggling teacher, that teacher that needs assistance, that teacher that needs to grow, and you rely heavily on them, you need them. I see with the changes coming down the pipe from state, the alignment, realignment of everything they've mentioned, there is still a need for two, there's still a need, it'd be nice to have three, but the duties of three are now being pushed to two. And I just don't think you can push the duties of three onto one, it's not gonna be effective. And in doing so, you're gonna push the responsibilities out to your teachers, not just so much of writing curriculum, but you're losing that ability to have multiple people in multiple buildings at multiple times, working with staff when they have questions. You're gonna now have Melissa and Mrs. Looby running between five attendance centers when we're rewriting math curriculum, whereas if we had three, at least there might, there would just be two buildings that we couldn't get to. My recommendation is, you need to keep that position.
Sure.
I make a motion, can I make a motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we keep the position, open it up for application as soon as possible. All right, we write this down, motion to keep, is it okay if I put the second instructional coach position? I don't wanna modify your motion, but I want instructional coach position, and seek applications, I think is what you said, correct? And that's motion by Rob Cruz, and second by John Lewis.
Okay, and thank you for letting us provide the information and, you know...
I have some more questions. Well, I mean, I, my, my question is, I mean, we need to get somebody very quick if, if it passes. So, I mean, I know there's a pool of people, and everybody's kinda gone on vacation, and somewhere teaching summer school, whatever, I mean...
They'll watch for this one.
So I, I think you've been approached?
Yes.
That's what I was gonna ask.
It's been posted.
It's been posted.
Oh, wait, most of them?
How many applicants do you have? How many are on? Last time we talked to you, two.
Two.
Are they secondary or elementary?
One secondary, one elementary.
Internal?
Yes, it's only posted internally?
I haven't posted it, that's true.
Yeah, it's only internal.
Yeah, I think it'd look crazy if we don't, because we had three, you know, and say, oh, no.
But there are, there are school districts that don't have any.
That's why I mean...
I know, and you said, when she said with the urgent care, you said, you just use it, or you realize that?
I didn't say that. No, I didn't say that. There are a lot of schools that don't have any instructional coaches.
Sure.
I think it helps us with the A, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 12 building transitions we've had, that's been a strong part of our...
Is that, is that a, or is that, that's not a nine month, is it, how many months is that?
It's ten months.
So when's the start? What do you...
I'm sorry, are you talking to me?
She's playing this whole bit. Two weeks before and two weeks after.
Is that enough time to get this new person up and running?
I'm gonna have to whip him in the shed.
There'll be a lot that takes place between, you know, your official first start date and...
Sure.
I'll have two weeks before school starts. Right, and that, that timeframe right there is very helpful.
That's all my questions.
Thank you, though, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion about the position, or thoughts? Okay, so the motion is to keep the second instructional coach position, and to, I guess we could say, continue to seek applications since we've already been doing that.
That's what I meant to say.
I knew you did. Okay, so, all in favor, because we don't need to do a roll call. All in favor, raise your hand, please. All opposed.
Motion fails?
Yes.
So now, do you need another motion?
To do what?
So I guess in a sense, it failed, you cut the position.
That sounds, that's my thought.
I just wanna make sure, because if that failed, no decision's been reached.
Cut, cut, cut the second one.
Yes.
That's what the motion was, to keep the second, and it failed to keep the second.
So we're gonna run instructional coach.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the revisions from policy DL, and I think you have that in your packet, is that correct? Yes, it should be at the back. And so there were...
Now, this was sent home to you?
Yes.
Or you reviewed, basically, with policy DL, it talks about moving from your monthly pay, as you see the red line items, to paying twice a month, and that goes to the fifteenth of the month and the last day of the month, whether it be the thirtieth, thirty-first, twenty-eighth, whatever that last day of the month is.
Kelly, does that still give, kind of, those issues going up on that at the last meeting? If there were issues, you're still good with that?
We are working really hard right now.
Okay.
Really hard.
One thing that you will need to do, if this is, we typically read into the minutes while you are amending or rescinding a policy without the first or second reading, and this would be due to the fact that you wouldn't be able to get the people paid in conjunction with your current proposal memorandum of understanding you have working on with your teachers.
Okay. Any, I think it should be motion then to approve the policy, the revisions of policy DL, basically?
There are students...
Any discussion?
You know, any, I think we may have talked about this earlier, I guess it's due...
Oh, right.
David, come out. Twice a month, or once a month?
No, I think they're splitting it.
We'll just divide the total amount by twenty-four instead of twelve.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so, we have a motion to approve the revisions for policy DL. All in favor, raise your hand.
Might ask for someone to read in the minutes the fact that this policy was changed due to an emergency being existing, that way we can start paying people starting July one.
So, what, they get retroactive?
Exists...
To go into effect.
To revise this policy.
Go into effect, what is it?
To, and to, and July, hold on, July, two thousand sixteen, two thousand one, so there is no lapse in payroll process.
So read the motion, so everybody can hear.
Uh, reading into the minutes, an emergency exists to revise this policy to go into effect on July one, two thousand sixteen, so there is no lapse in the payroll process due to current memorandum of understanding proposal.
So that way it'll just become effective this summer, and that wasn't in the motion?
It doesn't have to be, as long as it's just read into the minutes, which I just read it on there, you do not need to vote.
All right. Okay, so, moving to the, the last item, the approval of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen memorandum of understanding, I need a motion to approve that, thank you, Joan.
John Lewis?
Second, thank you.
Any discussion? We distributed that out to you. Currently, MST A has signed, and we need approval for Mrs. Welker to sign, therefore we can move forward, and it can line up next school year.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding? Very good.
I actually, the band thing, did everybody get that letter approved by us?
We're gonna have a presentation for you on January meeting. No, this is what it'd be, this, I guess I can update you on that. What we're doing is working with Mr. Reno, Dr. Freeman, speaking with Mr. Blair, the actual band instructors have not gone to, I was opposed to administrators, so we're not so sure exactly, let me take a step back, has not sat down in detail to discuss needs and what the needs are. As you see, what was sent to you in your email was different than what was presented in February, so we're wanting to ascertain exactly what the need is. And by that, I mean, if you read one line and said, for marching, then it also talked about concert tubas. Well, if you're marching, you carry a sousaphone, not a concert tuba. So there's some discussion that needs to happen between the high school administration and the, excuse me, the band instructors. So we're gonna kind of update you on that at that time, if that's okay.
Yeah. Okay, so, I need a motion to adjourn our meeting for this evening, Mrs. Hirschfield. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Very good, and is this what time?
I have eight thirty-one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so you understand...
What was that? That was, a, I don't remember.